All right, let's go ahead and get started with the committee meeting for July twenty fifth. We'll start nice in the Commission Committee. Chairman Sheffield. It's Bill number ninety five one twenty three A transfer hundred forty nine thousand dollars. County City Building maintenance.
Thank you. We're requesting this transfer to cover the remaining months of security of the County City Building. As you may recall, we started off with two hundred thousand dollars back in January, not knowing what that not knowing what that was really entail. There have been night meetings that made it to the burden of this. So they're essentially out of money. You could take this out of previously allocated fund in maintenance for building and structures. Brian does not feel that he needs that this year. So this is not an additional appropriation. This is a budget neutral request. As you know, during the initial budget here, this will talk about it more during the budget hearings. I will talk about next year's appropriation. And having had years of years worth of experience, having years worth of experience, we would be better able to talk about what costs were incurred for the security. And with that, what questions might you have?
So what did we spend on security last year?
We are trying to determine that because, you know, it was a little bit difficult because the sheriff provided security for both the County City Building and the courthouse. So what percentage or what amount is actually used by the allocated by the sheriff? I'm not sure.
Because we're looking at spending about three hundred fifty thousand for the year.
Fifty seven.
Three hundred and fifty seven thousand. What would that a hundred and thirty thousand in buildings purchased? How would that might have that have used?
Might have been used for additional repairs to the to the building. Brian has covered most of the all of the repairs that we have incurred thus far out of other accounts. So we're not going to come back and ask for additional money for that. Thinking some assume that there was no major problems like we had earlier twice with pipe breaks in the building.
So if that were to happen, then we might have to come back and ask for an additional appropriation.
Still have fifty one thousand dollars in that fund.
Yes.
Questions coming. Okay, I'm not on this many, but you might have a thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not really saving any funding in the budget on the sheriff's budget. Because they're still manning the same number of locations, correct?
Manning the access to the tunnel to the courthouse.
But presumably with the same staffing levels that they would downstairs in the main entrance of the County City Building.
Well, when we first suggested this, part of it was that the sheriff would reallocate some resources. And that has actually occurred. That's the sheriff.
So that after hours might be the component where his budget is being saved, some funding, some personnel costs.
We need to ensure that we are receiving reimbursement from the city for any after hours.
Meetings.
Meetings that they incur with above and beyond what the county is is incurred.
Has that been accounted for at all within this?
I had a meeting with the mayor a while ago, and that was one of the topics that was just briefly discussed. We need to get an actual number on them.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Let me just provide some color, Brian. The sheriff was having a hard time even getting to the ten deputies that he was trying to hire. Having a hard time finding people. He was having a very difficult time appeasing the judges. He was not giving them the coverage that they needed for security in the court. So this was about a year ago, this change was made so the sheriff could protect courts, but stay focused on that. Try to recruit the people and this outside security company could handle the problems.
Any other questions? Yes, I have a question. But I'm a little confused. So the security provided to the city is open for their evening meetings. That's above beyond their rent.
That is not included in their rent. It's not.
Okay.
Maybe a little clarification there for both. You both said it right, but it's a little bit different. They pay rent based on what we spend. So if this security expense is in the city county building department, John bills them their percentage. If it's not sitting in there like all the days the sheriff was providing it, we were never getting paid for it.
But they do pay for it. What is the percentage of the city?
Twenty eight or twenty eight.
So is it three fifty seven times twenty eight percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Once they pay, what we pay, they get twenty eight percent of it.
Okay.
So your guys' cost would be seventy two percent of that, whatever.
Until they stay, until they leave.
We've been hearing about that for a while.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just for another person, if they repay that, it goes back to the same fund. Also, the general fund.
The general fund, not the particular one. Right, we will put it back in departments.
Motion on. Said. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Three B appropriation of one million five hundred and forty six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Commissioner.
I can start, but I'm going to ask Steve to do the particulars. As you remember, we talked about building Portage Manor. Only a portion of the money was actually allocated. This is to allocate the remaining portion of that money of the expenses that we have and are incurring. Steve had more of the particulars, so I'm going to ask him to.
I'll try. Particulars, you know, it's that I'm going to give you some really easy stuff, and I'm not. So we don't know what the particulars will be. Like the records retention, we have a bunch of boxes of documents out there that we need to get moved out. Some could be shredded, some can't. We have, the auditor's office has asked me to hire an accounting firm to go through the resident trust funds and make sure that we've distributed the right amounts and that those dollars have all been put in the right places, should cross the Ts, dot the Is. We'll have security for a prolonged period of time to make sure that building isn't broken into, including some cameras that are being purchased that will be available long term. We'll have legal expenses. I think all of you just read the article. It just popped up an hour ago where there's been some type of settlement. On the federal case, we'll have probably additional legal expenses as we finish up the closure of Portage Manor. Those all fall into this other contractual because when we originally asked for the money, we didn't know how those were all going to break out. And I can't tell you today how they're all going to break out, but there will be expenses related to Portage Manor, and I hope they're all less than one point five million. And if so, you'll have a few dollars left to talk about next year in the American Rescue.
Questions are coming.
It says it's also relocation of residents to suitable facilities. What kind of funds are spent there?
So what happened is he told Portage Manor while they were waiting on this money to use their own. So they have been burning at both ends their existing reserves to move residents. Once these dollars become available, if there's any additional expenses like bills that haven't been paid yet, we'll be able to pay those bills next month when this is approved. I'm assuming there are bills that haven't been paid.
Your expectation, getting them to different facilities.
I don't necessarily know all those little.
This area.
Yeah. I don't think we handed anybody walking money, let's put it that way.
Well, no, I didn't.
All right, Derek can talk about stacks of bills you just received.
Been paying all the bills and about a hundred thousand dollars in contractual items in the hole right now. So, and that's
That's before we get this done.
That's before we get this money. So, and there's a couple of line items in which we are in the hole too. The majority of those stand for contractual services. It's, and I
Like Byron.
Byron is going in there. Trinity Trinity is a big one that they did not plan for at the beginning of the year when they so we're standing for security. Yes, because we had to up them to twenty four seven pretty much with all the residents leaving and then with with the lawsuits with people coming in because you can't stop people from being visited. So they would come in and stuff like that. So but yeah, it's just it's a lot. And it's amazing what's coming through that. I'm like, what is this for? And I'm still discovering things and I got like two huge books of contracts and I don't even know what's active and what's not. So it's just, it's taken a while to go through it.
Rather get it out here than wait to leave Sarah to ask the question. Do we know what portion? I mean, this is a lump sum. We don't, we don't know what buckets this is going to fall into for those expenses. Obviously, it's fresh off the presses, so to speak, for the settlement regarding violation of rights, federal case being settled. What portion of this goes to cover that expense? And is that the priority over the other expenses? And where does that fall in the? How do these funds get extended prioritized?
For any US dollar amount of rent.
Thank you. That wasn't available, right? Thank you.
Might read them out loud.
The settlement agreement reached on Tuesday does attempt to make the transition smoother for five residents who bought or brought a suit. For instance, the county will now pay Julie Calhoun and Laura McLellan five thousand dollars to cover travel and other related expenses. Jorge Sains will get sixty thousand dollars, which represents a six to ten month stay at a private pay home for his relative while additional assessments take place. The agreement also calls for the payment of attorney fees of twenty five thousand and five thousand in expenses. That's the financial breakdown. One ninety, correct?
Yeah, it might be. It's a little bit less.
Pointless five thirty probably less than one. Yeah, so if you're concerned when the question is. So roughly ten percent. The priority. Roughly ten percent. Yeah, it doesn't sound like.
Thank you. Yeah, welcome.
Have a motion. Second.
Nice tone.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Newspaper. All right, so Bill number ninety six dash twenty three. Commissioners again salary in the, and I'm sorry, together ninety five dash twenty three C appropriation of thirty seven thousand two sixty seven. So those are, yeah, mentioning.
While I would like to have this discussed, I would ask that it be tabled. Indefinite period. Will I have more information regarding this? Hey, are you sure?
Lead manager.
Oh, okay. I wasn't happy about the next one, that's why. Let's talk about the fleet manager. We
I heard. I can bring everybody that um, this kind of started, we didn't kind of start, it started about a year and a half ago. Councilman Chrisinski and I looking at a number of things such as PSAP, EMA. And that kind of morphed into us looking into the EMA department where we found irregularities and mileage. We found a car in the garage on Riverside they didn't know about. We found a gas key that they've been passing around. So in checking with all the stuff that we had, we found titles in our clerk's office, we found titles for cars belonging to the county in Tim's office. We found titles belonging to the car that Ryan was in charge of. So the bottom line, the county hasn't done anything since a policy that designed in twenty twelve to monitor that's monitoring, monitor phantom damage of the month to see how many miles you go in a month. Take that car out of the county, out of the state, wherever. So we started this a long time ago. I think Diane and Randy and Ivy K were there. We had Enterprise do this came and give us a presentation of what they can do so we could lease vehicle. We're just looking at the different options because the county police go through Enterprise and they were very happy with that. Then start a little bit because we had asked for information. We put our P out and it looks like Enterprise at this point is going to be possibly doing all that. But the moral of the story is we haven't devised anything. One department in the county has nineteen take home vehicles, which I think is accessible or accessible. We'll look at all that. Because we just don't have a handle on where our vehicles are, when they're being used, how they're being used, who's using them. So at this point, I think it's very prudent of us to hire a fleet manager to do all that, to gather all the information and not even know how many cars we have. Like I said, we found one in the garage on Riverside that nobody knew who it was. So it's just been something in my view that should have been done a long, long time ago for the commissioners and it hasn't, but that's no big deal because we can fix it. But I'll let Ryan just explain the information and the data. I know that Diana has been a couple of meetings and Randy and Bobby K nominarily, but he just, everything he's done of starting the tag, the mileage. Like I said, gas keys were being passed around indiscriminately. We have no, no real documentation of where, when, who was driving our cars. So I'll turn it over to Ryan. You have any other questions? I'll take it, sir.
Well, now that we're in budget talk, it might be helpful to know what apartment that had nineteen vehicles that you don't think maybe should have. I'm wondering if we should know that while we're talking.
Well, we've talked, it's the prosecutor's office and we can talk to him about this. And it's, that's something that we will probably discuss once things roll down. I guess fundamental or just a philosophical, do we want to have take home cars in lieu of giving somebody more money? Not true. So that's just another thing to open up the scenario.
Your dear, will we be saving on this? And we're in the middle of budget season. So where can, what particular department should we be looking for that we go through the budget for saving for next year on this?
The next year depends on all the data. Once if he is approved to get all that data to say, hey, streets are doing this, health department's doing this, this group is doing that. You know, we have vehicles for some people here. Um, that we're not parked, we got out of a parking garage. Contract that wasn't wise, but once we gather all that data, we'll be able to come to you guys and say, hey, how do we want to handle? You know, take home vehicles in the future.
But nothing in the twenty four budget.
No, no, we're, we need to gather all of that.
I had, I had asked Mr. Dalton the same question and similar answer. I think you were a little more precise, but very similar answer.
I was more precise than Derek.
I thought you were a little more.
We talked to Ken and the prosecutor's office, the same thing. Because once everything GPS, we're not, we don't do GPS to spy on you. I mean, there's the parameters, the prosecutor would do their own because they'll have investigations going on, but that's the thing, since they're not on file, do we still want them to have take home vehicles or they have a vehicle here when they come to work? So that'll be another discussion for
So I have a question. So this is a new permanent full time position?
Yes.
So you're saying that this person needs, this individual, this position needs to go and get their street. So this will be an ongoing once that's done, but be in need for a full time person. It should be managing.
Be looking at monitoring gas consumption. You'll be responsible for EMs, which is preventive maintenance to send a note out to Raphael or Brian or whatever. Take your car in phantom damage, all that type of stuff. Sorry?
I'm in complete management.
Enterprise does the, the parts of once some of that, yeah, but not where to the fact that we would need to do all the other stuff. You know, they'll tell us mileage and stuff, but that's him getting the mileage for them and providing all that. But I'll let Ryan go ahead.
Eric. Ryan, I'm with Department of Structure Planning and Growth. And Derek really kind of touched on a lot of the points that I had written here. But to answer your question, I think there would be a lot of data that we would get through GPS that would be offered by Enterprise and we'd be able to use that data and then get these vehicles in to give them service. In the beginning, there's going to be a lot of visiting different sites, checking out vehicles, making sure that they're okay. There's going to be a lot of coordinating between the commissioners and Enterprise to get some of our older vehicles out, get newer vehicles in. That way we're avoiding some of our higher maintenance costs. We have some vehicles that are really high in mileage that are costing us quite a bit. Enterprise would be a great partner to help us and assess would it make more sense to own this vehicle, would it make more sense to lease this vehicle? And they could give us insight into what kind of vehicle would be the best use case in this scenario where you might have somebody that's making house calls. They don't need an F three fifty. They might be fine in a Chevy or something. That better answer your question.
It does.
Okay.
Thank you. And I remember some of those conversations, but you know, I just again, adding the new full time position is, you know.
Sure. And there will be a ton of work in the beginning, especially with information gathering and getting things straight. That'll probably be the whole first year. Beyond that, it'll be getting into that rhythm of maintaining the things, getting the, getting the policies in place so that we can make sure that people are treating the vehicles right, making sure that the people that are in our vehicles are licensed to be in our vehicles, making sure that, you know, nobody's hopping in with a suspended license. Just to kind of name a few things. Getting partnerships established with local repair shops.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Panda. Ryan, are you, are you the person who can take the full on?
I would like to be.
Would like to be, okay. So in addition to what you talked about, so far, have you been looking at EV, you know, would this vehicle be served by being an EV? It would be more cost effective to be EV. Or looking at grant options, maybe get more EVs in the fleet?
Absolutely. And that's come up a few times. I think where it makes sense, it's worth looking at. That's not anything that I've decided on. I think more conversations probably need to take place regarding that, but I know that there are a few pretty attractive grants where if we did engage in, you know, getting these EVs, they actually put in charging stations for us. And it's, it's free. They just offer them, I think it's up to four that they would install. But I mean, those are all from that could be looked at as we kind of
Besides the fleet manager, will this require us to hire any other employees?
This program. I don't believe so.
Any other questions? Questions? Question please on, do I need to do two separately here? Motion please on ninety six dash twenty three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Ninety six dash twenty three. Dash twenty three C.
Most favorable. Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is favorable. All right, and then ninety seven twenty three and ninety five twenty three D have been pulled. Correct.
Not full of hell.
Hell.
Else.
We need to look. Leaving committee ninety seven. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Chairman Sheffield. Next up is our Human Services Criminal Justice Committee. Carewoman Grant.
Ms. Root, ninety five twenty three P and appropriation of eighty thousand dollars for the health department. Hi, Amy Rupee, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor. And we are requesting an additional appropriation for our immunization supplies. Post COVID, a lot more people are traveling, so we are having to purchase more travel vaccine than we have in years past. Also having to administer more rabies vaccinations. One thing to note is we do receive funds back for the vaccinations that we do receive. We do add cost plus our administration fee. For instance, our rabies vaccine is three hundred and sixty five dollars that we do recoup from the patient, which does go then to our county health fund balance. So we're requesting to increase eighty thousand dollars for immunization supplies. Any questions? I can see none. You have a motion. So favorite one.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ninety five twenty three E tests with a favorable. Ninety five twenty three F and appropriation of eleven thousand three hundred and sixty three dollars and thirty seven cents from the health department. This is a budget reduction. This grant expired June thirtieth, and so this is tidying up the accounts, zeroing them out since the grant did expire. The money cannot be reappropried. Correct. It's a reimbursement grant, so the funds, if they're not spent by the deadline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty five twenty three F passes to the full committee with favorable recommendation. Ninety five twenty three G and appropriation budget reduction thirty five thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars, health department. Same thing here. The grant expired June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. It was a reimbursable grant, so those funds are no longer available to us. Questions? All those in favor? Oppose. Eighty five twenty three G test for council with favorable recommendation. Ninety five twenty three H and appropriation of twenty five thousand for the health department. This is a grant that we received from the State Department of Health for our public health emergency preparedness program. It is in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars. We did just hire a new local public health coordinator that started just yesterday. So they will be tasked with going through all of our PPE that we have, I believe here on the fourth floor and seeing if anything needs to be replenished. Also just having funds available for our mobile immunization clinic if needed. We have a lot of PPE left over in general that is expired and if it is expired, it is up. That is something we are tasking our new local public health coordinator to go through. I believe the fourth floor office here is full with PPE and then we also have an offsite Beacon Pub facility that has pallets of PPE. So she will be going through and looking to see what is expired and what needs to be replenished. The recommendation is if it is expired, it is best to start it. So it's just gone. Nobody can use it later. They don't find any other. You can, like upstairs, we had some wipes that were expired, so staff decided to take those to be able to clean their desk. They know that it's not going to have the germ killing abilities that it states on there, but they still wanted them to clean their desk. So they can be used for certain things, but you know, with them being expired, they can't be expected to.
So how, what's the expiration of a mask? Because that's, I mean, we're talking about that. Is there like a one year, two year, was it disintegrate? I don't understand how they don't.
And ninety five masks?
You do, right.
It just depends when it's produced. Depends on, I mean, we might not get it, you know, six months post production. I don't know if there's a standard expiration date on a mask. I know they do have them. I don't know if it's a set one year, two year, depending on, you know, what level of N ninety five it is. I just think it becomes less effective. I don't know that necessarily disintegrates, but the effectiveness that it, you know, claims to have does, is get reduced.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion on?
It should move better weeks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Ninety five twenty three H goes to the full committee or full council with favorable recommendation. Next, ninety eight twenty three salary amendments of the health department appropriation, six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. This is our health immunization grant that we get annually through the State Department of Health. Immunizations is now a core service required through Health First Indiana. Instead of using Health First Indiana funds, we would like to continue to apply for federal funding to support those efforts. This does include some part time staff for our immunization clinic and supports our mobile clinic efforts.
The staff that you're requesting, are you, is this in your budget request as well?
No, these staff are staff that are currently funded through the grant or new staff that we would like to include. They are not included in our county health department fund one one five nine.
And then I noticed you've got like, for example, the immune outreach coordinator, current salary of fifty thousand. Post salary up to fifty thousand, two fifty two five. So that person apparently is already part of the program. And you're upping the salary based on the guidance, the twenty twenty four budget guidance, or how did you come up with that? And you're upping the salary based on the guidance, the twenty twenty four budget guidance, or how did you come up with that number?
Correct, we are in our budget request, um, that we're having our meeting tomorrow, we are requesting a five percent increase for our staff. Um, even though the request for the immunization coordinator is fifty one, two fifty in the actual appropriation, because that takes into account their salary this year and then the salary next year. Those six months added twenty twenty three rate, six months after twenty twenty four rate.
May I have just a couple of process questions here? Um, how will the grant increase childhood immunization rates?
By going out to. The community, having our mobile clinic, we have schools calling us, we have different community events that we attend. This past Saturday, we had a back-to-school event at our Mishawaka office that was, um, advertised and attended by. Children who needed to be vaccinated prior to school. So we, having the mobile clinic go out into the community, is helping getting children immunized who don't have access to come to us.
And I'm assuming those are not influenza vaccines at this time of the year, is that assumption correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so how will this increase influenza vac?
Same, we will still have those efforts to go out into the community with the influenza, we will also be. Uh, vaccinating adults as well as children during the school year, we tend to focus on making sure that the children have their. Childhood vaccinations that are required by their school, come flu time, we open it up to adults as well, as well as any.
So you're reducing barriers by going to the?
By going to them instead of having them come to us.
Are what other recommended vaccines are included in?
Every vaccine, every vaccine that we offer that's currently on our fee schedule, um, anything from, um. HPV to HEPA, HEPI, we offer everything that's available and. Anything that they need and we have, you know, VFC available if they're unable or are underinsured or uninsured. We offer to the, that to them free of charge.
That determined by the Indiana Department of Health, which vaccines you will offer?
Uh, not so much, it's our Director of Nursing has some say into what she wants to offer. In our clinic, we do go by recommendations from the State Department of Health, but then we do go above and beyond what they recommend.
Well, can you, is there, what's, what do you typically track or have, I guess, um, or offer that is not? Something that's the State Department would recommend?
And unfortunately, I, I don't know that I can get that information and respond back, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion on ninety eight twenty three. Favor. Opposed? Eighty ninety eight twenty three moves for the favorable recommendation, uh, ninety five twenty five I. All those in favor, aye, aye, opposed? Ninety five twenty three I moves for favorable recommendation. Next is ninety nine twenty three, a salary amendment of the Health Department for one million, one hundred and forty two thousand, nine hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents.
And this is a request for year three of three on the CDC grant, which does fund our human health workers. That do work out in the community. Um, it is an increase from years one and two, where we were at nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for our request. So this is additional funds that the CDC have made available to us for year three.
I've got lots of them again.
Mr. Shaxel?
Well, I find really interesting how this grant has developed, right, and we're getting the first page here. It says the CHW is focused on providing insurance navigation and social needs assessments. To community members, right, and to put us back full. Both of those, providing insurance navigation very important if people understand what insurance is available to them. And then, you know, what are their, what are their needs, um, but then I go back all the way to page twenty nine. But as I was going through this, I'm marking all sorts of stuff and don't realize that the year we're in is all the way on page twenty nine. Um, so I'm gonna save everybody's time. Um, so it looks to me like, as I went through the three years, there's a kind of a shift in focus towards. Um, cancer prevention. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Um, that is going to be the shift that we go towards, towards the end of this grant cycle as we jump into Health First Indiana as. Mention is a core service, we are still going to continue with our SNA's, the social needs assessments, as well as our insurance navigation, however, we do want to switch the focus to chronic health due to the requirement of Health First Indiana.
So. The. Community health workers. If, if I'm reading this correctly, I'm understanding you are going to become an integral part of our attack on these, uh, cancer rates by. By encouraging people to get as much of the screening as possible.
Correct, letting them, letting them know where they can get the screening, connecting them with the resources that they need.
And you have specific communities that you're trying to hit, which I'm assuming are the most underserved?
It'll, for right now, the census tracts remain the same as year one and year two. That could definitely change for the focus on chronic health, because that would be a whole different. Different.
Favor. Opposed? Ninety nine twenty three moves for favorable recommendation, uh, ninety five twenty three J. Favor. Opposed? Ninety five twenty three J moves for the favorable. Hundred, hundred dash twenty three in Health Department and appropriation of three hundred and twenty four thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and thirty four cents.
A supplemental grant to our immunization program. This will be year three that we have received this fund, this, this funding through the State Department of Health. This also supports our mobile efforts. One new position that we would have in this grant is insurance billing specialist. We are hoping to move away from our third-party. Partner, VaxCare, where we receive ten dollars per vaccination administered. If we were to have our own insurance billing specialist, we would be able to submit and get. More revenue for the vaccines that we administer. So that is a new position that we are requesting funded by this grant.
Mr. Murphy or Mr. Goll, you have a comment?
It's the death, the mission is saying you presented it there, just from the financial perspective.
I think the, these grants are, are great, and they're not capping into general fund resources, they're general resources. Include all the cost related. And I think that's why the Health Department's fund balance has increased so much in the last couple of years because of all the significant grants that they. See.
For this, so are we saying this person is going to be, is going to save us as much? From paying the vendor as it will to pay the person that's going to kind of balance out, is that what we're saying, or?
We already have our EMR in place, so that's already, you know, purchased and already happening. We just need the person that has the knowledge to get us credentialed with all of the private insurance, and then to be able to bill that private insurance, instead of having VaxCare as our, as our crutch to get. All the ten dollars per vaccine, so yes, it, we should realize a great, great amount of.
We have a community-wide policy of parental consent for specific vaccines, and I'm thinking COVID nineteen.
Not of parental consent, however, with the, um, new law that went into effect July first, we do have. Purge that came from the State Department of Health that we have to physically say to the parent face-to-face before administering any vaccine.
So it's not just COVID, it's anything.
Correct, correct, any vaccine.
Okay, and I think a book, none of hundred dash twenty three. On favor, uh, opposed? Things forward with favorable recommendation, ninety five dash twenty three K. Opposed? Ninety five twenty three K was forward with favorable recommendation, thank you. Next is a hundred and one dash twenty three salary amendment from the Prosecutor's Office, forty, four hundred and sixty nine thousand, one hundred and thirty three dollars.
Murderer to ask for appropriation and salary amendment for our, uh, grant that we got for the. APS, Adult Protective Services, the grant is for nine hundred and thirty eight thousand, two hundred and sixty six dollars. And we're asking for the appropriation for this, it's a two-year grant, the first year is the, uh, four sixty nine. One thirty three, and that over here tonight, we'll ask, or next year we'll ask for the second year of the grant. It's, uh, there's no code base, there's nothing in it's. And it pays for eight investigators and the director, eight, yes.
You repeat that, second sentence, there is for eight investigators and what else?
And the director.
Uh, any questions?
So this is the, sorry, this is a grant from the state of Indiana. Okay, and so this is, this all comes from the state, this is the, the county taxpayers, anything outside of. Actually, this is, this is the first year of the year.
We've had this grant, uh, for one year, probably. In the last ten, fifteen years, it's a long.
It's very minor committee, but don't mind me, though, just remind us, um, how many counties are covered by this brand besides us? Four counties, we're a. Marshall. Marshall Health Park. Uh, the ask. Our, our eight-person team and supervisor, yes, I bet they get all the pages.
Like I say, uh, Justin. He supervises.
Doesn't solve them.
During the COVID, he also filled in for investigators and couldn't make it, you know, some patching, does it all.
The hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars in group insurance, where does it get paid from? These nine people?
They get, it gets paid out of county general. Prosecution.
So is that in your budget?
Yes, it's in the prosecutor's.
Okay, and the raises here, how, what kind of percentage?
The director is five percent and the investigator is three percent.
And one new employee?
One new employee is being hired at the starting rate of the person that's leaving, so they'll get, uh, for the first year, they get nothing. Next year, they get three percent.
Yes, another question, Mr. Drake, uh, any chance, Bob, we can? Each other counties, maybe help?
I've asked.
That would be up to the state. We try for. I've, I've done this for fifteen years, and for fifteen years, I've tried to get them to chip in. I think Ken has to honor. When you're dealing with the state, uh, it's kind of a struggle.
Make a motion on a hundred and one dash twenty three.
Motion, motion said, a favor, second.
On favor? The one oh one dash twenty three moves forward with favorable. Motion, ninety five twenty three. All those in favor? Opposed? Ninety five twenty three, all moves forward with favorable recommendation. Next, we have seventy seven dash twenty three, a salary amendment for the Dugger Home Center, um, zero appropriation.
Uh, there's two parts to this salary amendment, the first one is in the DOC branch, we're looking to. Eliminate the executive director's position and take those funds and spread them out to various employees throughout the organization. Um, and the reason we're requesting that is because of our high turnover and high overtime rate. And so, uh, right now, our detention officers, we're at least six, six, um, empty positions out of twenty. And we're also probably going to lose one more even next week. And so, to kind of offset this, we're looking to get the salary rate up with our employees and be more competitive. So that was the reason with the, in order to do that in the grant, we also have pension officers and project income. So the second part of this is also, we're looking at to eliminate a position, which was the dietary day. And also to give the same type of raise to those in place who were, were equivalent throughout the organization.
Questions?
Yeah. And I just, again, I'm wondering why we, this isn't part of the budget process. Because there, this is, you know, we're going through budget process now, this seems to be kind of stuff we're talking. Uh, in budget. There are specific reasons why it's not.
Chairman Bride, four one six one, Lake Grove, it is a part of the next year's budget process that we, uh, presented to you all. But in speaking with, uh, Commissioner Dieter, Commissioner Baxmeyer, and, uh, Attorney Mish. We talked about trying to get, uh, salaries competitive for this budget year. And so the discussions came before, how can we eliminate positions to save money to be competitive salaries? So that's why we're coming to this, for this year to get relief, um, now as we are losing staff, uh. Through the jail and the probation department and everyone else, so it is also in the budget that we presented, uh, last week. And, but we want, needed a relief for now for twenty three.
This is not additional money, but yeah.
So when we get, when we get to. Your budget numbers for twenty twenty four, are we using these, did you use these new numbers?
Yeah.
Did?
Yes.
These numbers are already.
Those are included, that's correct.
Anything else?
Cool, that kind of been the train of thought, with some other departments, uh. As far as the health concerned, we need it now, before we wait for the board. It's a question.
Right, also, the departments that are funded by the state, they get their money in fiscal years, they don't actually know things until about. Right. Where we want them to be on a calendar basis for budget purposes, they don't know enough information.
I'm aware of that.
Right now is when they know.
I'm aware, I'm aware of that part, but thank you.
Now, you're saying as in.
They don't know what they can do for the next fiscal year. January is so far away, for the budget that we're working on, so they're, they're, they seem like they're coinciding, but right now they know what they can do for the next fiscal.
But what I'm saying is, we've had several requests to act down for different departments.
If, if I may, that's, that was part of the thing when it came for the, because there were other, uh, counties that came with budget.
Mr. Ruth, Mr. Ruth, am I looking at this wrong or?
They, they have considered if their budget neutral, if they eliminate a position, give offense to. Okay.
And do it now.
And we could do it whenever, yeah.
I'm just making sure that I, my train of thought is correct.
We had, it's been our past practice. Is right.
I want to make sure that. I'm thinking of it correctly, this is not a first.
No, that's how we've done it for a long time.
Okay.
That if they put a eliminated position, they could take the savings and, and realize, gather love.
Thank you very much.
So, just so I understand, so that position is in a position that you don't anticipate having to, uh, eliminate a position, you don't anticipate. Going back to us in the next year and saying, well, you probably needed that position.
Not at all, actually.
When was the last time we had this position?
At least five, six years.
Been a while.
And that's actually a commissioner's position, so they definitely might also schedule what they would like to do, so they bring it back to, put it back in my budget, that's whatever.
You're, you're not special, I asked that question.
Oh, no, no.
My question is, obviously, this doesn't come out of our general fund, you have, you, you get your funding from the state, is there enough funding from the state? To cover, I, I realize it's budget neutral, but is there still enough money from the state to cover your operating budget?
Yes, based on the way this is like that. And that's even if we build the six open positions as well.
Yes.
So there's current savings, so to speak, even though we would like to fill those positions, there is.
Else, okay. Get a motion on seventy three twenty three.
Motion favorably.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seventy five twenty three moves forward with favorable recommendation and ninety five twenty three M.
Second.
All those in favor. Opposed. Ninety five twenty three M moves forward with a favorable recommendation, that is all.
Human Services Trumbull Justice Committee, thank you, Chairman Wondrake, I've got the Land Youth Planning Committee Chairman Big.
Yeah, it's present, bill number ninety two dash twenty three tax payment.
Ariel Bryan, Economic Development Planner, Department of Infrastructure Planning Growth, my office is on the eleventh floor. Uh, Ed Coe, the petitioner, coat to light gauge, galvanized steel and aluminum coil for the building material industry. The petitioner plans to add approximately thirty thousand square feet to its current building. An estimated cost of four and a point seven five million and to invest fourteen million into machinery, equipment and tooling. This project helps Ed Co retain its workforce of twenty or eighty seven people. And they, this expansion, they anticipate adding an additional forty employees at an average wage of twenty eight dollars an hour. Uh, staff is recommending a six-year phased-in real property tax abatement and a five-year personal property tax payment at hundred percent. I have the plant manager from ETO here, if you have any questions about this project.
Any question?
Um, the average salary is anticipated at twenty eight dollars an hour. Could you provide a range of low to high rate?
Didn't come up with that number, so um currently our employees start minimum starting pay is uh twenty. Uh, we have, and then like, for example, our maintenance hourly pays are up in the, you know, thirty two range. And we also have salary, those forty people, uh, nine of them would be hourly employees, one of them would be a salary. I think that's not far from what we're doing right now with our employees, we have a lot of long-term employees that, you know, they get a raise every year. So, thank you.
Senator Federal. Baby say I. Host.
Bill number ninety three dash twenty three tax abatement petition from Max Plastics.
Uh, the petitioner is a startup company that was founded in twenty twenty two. Uh, back in August of ninth of twenty twenty two, their declaring revolution was approved. But because of a conflict between the founder of the company and his former employer, uh, he threw his. Confirming resolution before it came to this committee. Uh, now that that issue has been resolved, he's ready to start production and ready to start hiring employees. The petitioner recently purchased the former United conveyor facility along Philly Highway. And is planning on investing approximately five million dollars in manufacturing equipment. Uh, this capital investment is expected to result in twenty five new jobs at a blended rate of twenty five dollars an hour. During two thousand twenty three with potential, if successful, to add an additional hundred employees in between now and twenty twenty five. Uh, I have the founder of the company here, uh, to answer any questions you might have.
Any question? Yes, sir.
Same question, actually, it's a blended pay is expected to be twenty five dollars. Or do you give an estimate of, of the load?
Yeah, we're hiring today at um secondary work seventeen fifty, the starting rate. Eighteen fifty is primary operator, uh, and that makes up probably seventy percent of the workforce, then our main hand starts off at about twenty five. Um, our ninety day program though goes up a dollar in all of those wages, so we tend to go up now the. Salary staff is about fifty. They range anywhere from the mid fifties to, I'll say, mid nineties, that staffing. Um, I would, if you guys don't mind, too. It's one, one of the benefits we're doing at Max Plastics is, um, it's just not about the wage. So our benefits program, we pay eighty twenty today, the vision is in five years, each year go five percent more. So the company gets to a hundred percent benefit plan on top of the wage, so a little more of a value alignment for our community.
You just tell us a little bit more about your couple.
Sure, love you that.
So Max Plastics is really going to start off in rotational molding and going to grow into thermal forming as well. Rotation molding, I'm, I'm sure most people here know about the RV industry, water tanks and holding tanks is. One of the things they use in that industry, uh, that we can make. The other industry is marine, so seat backs and councils. Um, and then if you get into the larger world of kayaks, coolers, fuel tanks and fuel systems for depth tanks. Uh, so plastics can be a primary solution for a lot of um companies out there, so we plan on attracting business from Caterpillar. Uh, John Deere, Kabota, I'm just going to be a local focus, but we're bringing business in from other states.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
The material they use contains E pass.
E pass, um, I'd have to.
Whatever that stands for.
I have to confirm that, um, so we, we do with linear low density. Polyethylene, and so when you get into that, I, from a chemist standpoint, I have to go back and confirm that, I just don't know. Be honest, sir.
Right, thank you.
If you're referring to the lawsuit that was this subtle. Do you, do you know what that chemical is used for in that?
So I can try better. Water, water repellent, see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would lean, I would lean towards the no, but I would like to confirm that.
Thank you.
Yes, you said, um, aside from twenty five jobs, then possibly a hundred more jobs possible. Am I correct in understanding that, Larry? Probably an eighty five percent confidence factor today, yes.
Okay, and can you tell me how's that gonna happen? But is that just market driven or?
Twenty five years of experience, I finally left a big companies and in this industry in particular, there's over three hundred molders across the United States. That are privately held for the most part. So we've already reached out and, I mean, the first ten customers are multimillion dollar deals out of the gate. So I've already filled the three machines I have um from a verbal obligation. Which means two shifts, five times per machine, so that's thirty people before August. So I'm already on track to fill those three and had to make commitments on new equipment already coming. So I'll have to make commitments by September to get equipment in this year to fill the next thirty roles, so. That's sixty without any floaters or secondary help, so you're seventy five people without the office. That's already potentially contractually obligated, I mean, we're verbally obligated, so. Very well-connected industry, good reputation, very honest, integrity-driven, and that's really helped make the connections I have. Thank you. Uh, real committee have nothing, I have nothing, we have no presentation, just a reminder that in approximately ten minutes. Eleven minutes, we will meet on the seventh floor from commence tonight's budget, so.
Yeah, one more thing, I wanted to just publicly thank Sergeant Jason Zabinski. Of the county, of, of the county sheriff's department, I had a constituent concerned about trucks coming down out of Michigan. On a no truck road where you had homes with children, um, I, he called me, but my. Especially went, got ahold of Sergeant uh Zabinski and uh spent a week using resources. In a very useful manner, he solved the problem, so I'm just going publicly, thank you.